Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for December 6, 2016. To start the meeting out this evening, we need to open up a Truth in Taxation Public Hearing, and so I asked the Clerk to call the roll to open up the hearing.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daeney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I believe, Ms. Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let me make a couple of comments about this tax levy at our public hearing. This public hearing is for input on the 2016 Village of Bartlett property tax levy. We have been discussing this over the last several meetings, and to recap that levy, the proposed levy totals $10,554.227. The general corporate levy is flat from the prior year. Combined with the police levy and the general corporate and the pension levy, the three have increased .33 percent from the 2015 extension. The debt service levy has increased 66.88 percent. In total, the levy has increased $1,194.421, or 12.76 from 2015. The increase in the debt levy is because of the police building. The 2016 tax rates from Cook and DuPage County will be determined in the spring of 2017 when both counties finalize the EAVs for the 2016 tax levy. This levy will be presented to the Village Board tonight for final approval, and the levy will be filed with each county clerk no later than December 27, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Is there any questions from the audience? Board? Anything?
Oh, we do have one question.
What does that mean to the taxpayer? What percentage is going up?
Just for the addition we're putting on the police force.
Let me try to answer that question for you. The general levy, which is the main levy for the Village of Bartlett, is flat, which means it's not going up at all. The amount that's going up, as I said, is because of the police building, and I think the Board is committed to keeping that at about $90 a year for a home with the of about $250,000. Also, you might be interested to know that the Village of Bartlett's percentage of your taxes is about 8 percent of the total bill.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Carbonaro. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
The Truth in Taxation Public Hearing is hereby adjourned. Once again, ladies.
Trustee Aaronz?
Here.
Cammerer?
Here also.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Daeney?
Yes, here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We've requested that Pastor Victor Agati do our invocation this evening. Pastor Agati, if you can step up to the podium. Thank you for being here.
Privilege. Why don't we bow our head? Heavenly Father, I want to say thank you, Lord, for bringing us here together again. Lord Jesus, thank you for everything you've done this year. Also, I want to take this moment to say, Lord Jesus, would you continue to bless and protect the people of Bartlett, Lord Jesus, our board, Police Department, the Fire Department, Lord? I pray your hands upon the citizens of this wonderful city, and, Lord, I pray God for guidance and protection upon our board as we move forward into the next year. Thank you for all you've done, Lord, and I give you praise, and I pray, oh, Lord, that everybody will have a Merry Christmas and a wonderful 2017. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Agati.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How come we never sing the National Anthem?
You got one shot at that.
Vince loves to lead it.
Yeah, that was a shot.
I'm sorry. Trustee Carbonaro loves leading it.
Maybe next time. Maybe write for a Christmas treat. Next, beyond the agenda, we have our consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda, asterisks, will be considered enacted in one motion. There'll be no additional discussion on items on the consent agenda. At this time, is there anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I would like to remove the minutes from the consent agenda and add item 12A1, the Bluff City Industrial Park Act in Mobile.
Specific on the removal? Is there an error?
No, I was absent.
Oh, gotcha.
My daughter's dance recital, first dance recital.
Which one do you want to add, trustee?
12A1, Planning and Zoning.
Anything else? Then I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove the minutes, and it will include the bill's list from December 6, 2016. We're adding the Bluff City Industrial Park Act in Mobile under Planning and Zoning Committee. Also, on the consent this evening, we have Sonic Site Plan Amendment. Also down under Public Works Committee on the consent, we have the purchase of one small dump truck, purchase of one large dump truck, and the IDOT construction on state highway. So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Aaronz. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry. Can I clarify one thing? Did you say we're keeping the bill's list on the consent agenda, or we're not?
We are.
We are, okay.
Trustee Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Board and Committee, minutes from November 15, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Aaronz. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item we have this evening, if anything under it, is the President's Report, and we are graced by a report from Lotterbach and Amen Auditors. So I believe it'll be very invigorating.
Let me introduce our managing auditor, Jamie Wilkie, who was here last year to give you the report on her annual audit.
Thank you, I appreciate it. This evening, I am happy to report a very clean audit. For any of you that have that accessible in front of you, we will cover very briefly the large document that has the nice logo on the front. First of all, I'd like to start off this evening thanking Todd and the rest of the Finance Department staff. This is a pretty intensive process from start to finish, basically six months of back-and-forth communication, testing, drafting financial statements, and review process. So certainly, that does not happen without Finance Department efforts. I'm happy to let the Board know that we actually had only just two or three adjusting entries. For a community of this size, to have the Finance Department fully adjust the books is actually not the norm, so certainly to come into that, we thank the staff for their efforts in preparing for the audit. That's obviously indicated by our clean audit opinion, and if you are in the large document, you'll find that on pages 1, 2, and 3 of the report. The village was issued what we call an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level we are able to issue. That means the financial statements, as presented, are materially correct. I want to point out a very important section right after the audit opinion, and that is what we call Management's Discussion and Analysis. It should be included in the same tab behind Independent Auditor's Opinion, so just a few pages back after that tab. Management's Discussion and Analysis, you'll see indicated by page numbers MDNA 1 through 13 at the bottom. Give everybody just a second to get there. Those 13 pages are really what we consider to be the executive summary to the audit. It is a large document. There are a lot of numbers and disclosures. Management has really done an excellent job. It's actually one of our best-written MDNAs, I would say. Really does give some insightful information with regards to some of the trends that were reported in the current fiscal year, revenue side of things. So, for example, we're obviously seeing some rebound in our state shared revenues and permit fees, et cetera. On the expenditure side of things, focusing on where dollars were spent, especially in the general fund, for example. So there's some very good discussion in those 13 pages. I always think, from the Board's perspective, I would read those 13 pages in detail. The village received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Just so the Board is aware, that is another independent, third-party review of the financial statement. You'll find a copy of last year's award provided in the introductory section of the audit. This is an important award because it's really our highest-level reporting that we have in the government world. So again, for the staff to put in the efforts to receive that award, we certainly commend the Board and staff for going through those efforts. We will again be submitting this year's audit to the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, obviously anticipating receipt of that award as well. We had no internal control-related issues to bring forth tonight, so really, overall, a very clean audit process, and I would be certainly happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
It's good not to have any questions.
It was nice and clean, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think when they're clean next year, we can just have this electronically. There's issues, just put the issues on the table, right?
I know a way to solve all that.
Another day. Next, we have a National Impaired Driving Prevention Month proclamation from the President's Report. And I will read the proclamation. Again, National Impaired Driving Prevention Month, December 2016. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed 998 people in Illinois during 2015, and whereas hundreds of those deaths involved a driver impaired by alcohol and/or drugs, and whereas the December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving, and whereas for thousands of families across the state and nation, the holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost, and whereas organizations across the state and nation are joined with the driver- drive sober or get pulled over and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired-driving law enforcement efforts, and whereas the Village of Bartlett is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic and Safety and other traffic safety groups in an effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now therefore, I, Coven Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim December 2016 as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in the Village of Bartlett. And do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals, and healthcare providers, schools and public and private institutions, to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving, and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year, dated the 6th date of December 2016. I do so proclaim. Uber is the moral of the story.
That's what I was going to say.
Next item we have this evening, question-answer. Anybody have any questions for staff?
I got a question. I was contacted by some residents about Global Recycling, and I know residents have also called into the village and have emailed. I'm wondering if you guys could just kind of give us a background of kind of what you guys are doing over there.
Yeah, let me see if we can get a summary. We're dealing, as I said today, a number of issues out there, and if someone wants to kind of summarize it between Public Works and Police, go ahead, Dan.
Sure. Well, as you know, we've recently finished the improvements for the Quiet Zone, at least on the east side of the tracks. We still have to do the west side once the spur line can relocate the driveway. With that improvement, it included the relocation of the Global driveway onto Lambert along with the parking lot there. One of the issues that we're dealing with right now are the trucks trying to figure out how to maneuver in and out. We do believe that they, I've watched them, can make the turn. We had the big question about being able to use the parking lot and backing in to the Global site, and that, I think, is working as long as the customers aren't parking in the truck turnaround area, so we're working with Global to get their parking situated. The issue we're dealing with right now is the southbound-to-westbound turn for the trucks heading out of Global and west on Spalding. In order to make that turn, part of the Quiet Zone, we have to do that raised median that we installed. We cut back the curb at the northwest corner of Lambert and Spalding as much as we could, trying to avoid relocating ComEd poles, because you can't just relocate the one pole, you end up having to relocate many, which gets expensive. So we've got to cut back as much as we can. The trucks, because they're not used to it, and they see that pole there, they don't want to hit that pole, so they're going way over to make that turn. I think once they've had a chance to be able to do the maneuver, they'll be able to figure it out, but they do have to go into the, what would be like the left turn lane. If you were turning left from Lambert onto Spalding to head east, they do have to go there to do a wide turn, which is legal for a truck to make that maneuver. I still believe it's safer than what they were doing when Global's driveway was on Spalding, which was driving into the intersection of Spalding and Lambert and backing up, which would back up the traffic onto the railroad tracks. So I think, overall, it has improved, but we still are going through the growing pains of learning the new movements and all that.
Has anyone been cited over there for anything?
It's been more educational at this point. My trafficking has been out there, literally standing in the intersection, seeing the apex turns and seeing what the hardships are, and speaking with the drivers and trying to work with them and making sure that it won't be a long-term issue, but it will continue to be monitored.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we think we can get anywhere with that whole situation out there by maybe putting together a special task force that meets with Cook County to bring down some, like, regular guidelines for this business that's driving us crazy? There's got to be something additional that we can do.
In terms of monitoring Global?
In terms of, yeah, something, yeah.
Dig another crack at that. We had met with Cook County, actually, they brought Cook County out to solidify what they were doing, but we can bring our own county folks out and see what we can do.
I think Commissioner Snyder would be interested in seeing what really goes on out there.
Sure, absolutely.
I started driving by on the way to and from the office, so it's not representative, but I noticed the times that I drive by, the truck traffic isn't there, but you still hear the trucks on site with the backup beepers, and you still hear the intercoms.
Yeah, you do.
That's still a huge problem, but I don't see the trucks, I think, because I'm off hours. I think I'm before or after business, but...
If those intercoms are that loud, there's got to be something to do citing them for disturbing the peace. You know, if they're hearing that inside the houses around there on the intercom...
Yeah, those intercoms were there before, but I think what we had talked to them about before is doing it east to west, intercoms, and they're...
Correct, I think it was direct.
Yeah, and that really modifies it a lot, and I think what they're doing is just ignoring that now with all this new stuff going on, and we need to get out there and say, "Look, we need you to go back to the way you were doing it," because that had been a problem that was resolved.
Yeah.
And it's back.
Well, could staff give us kind of an update as things kind of unfold, just so we're kind of aware if more issues arise? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. Anything else? Hearing done, we'll move on to the Town Hall portion of the meeting. This is the part of the meeting where you can address the Board. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board at this time? Hearing done, we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports this evening. First Standing Committee report for this evening is under Planning and Zoning, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both items for planning and zoning were addressed in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item under Standing Committee reports is the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have this evening is under Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is the 2016 property tax levy, and the second one is the tax levy abatements. Regarding the 2016 property tax levy, we're ready to discuss that if need be. However, we have discussed this numerous times before, and if there aren't any objections, I'd like to move right into the motion portion of that. Okay, if that being the case, thank you, Todd. If that being the case, I move to approve ordinance number 2016.
91?
Sorry?
91.
91. An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the general corporate and other purposes for the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2016, and ending April 30, 2017.
Second. Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Aaronz. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say one thing. If you've obviously followed our Board meetings, I think that Cook County residents are being double taxed as far as mosquito abatement, and I'm going to vote no on the levy, but I do want to thank staff and our village attorney for working on the issue to try to resolve some of the issues that, you know, plague Cook County, so I do appreciate it.
Very good. Anything else? Hearing done, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The next item on our agenda is the tax levy abatements. Again, we're prepared to discuss that this evening. However, we've had discussion in the past. I'd like to just move to the motion portion of that.
Yep.
Any objections? Okay. If not, I move to approve ordinance number 2016-92. An ordinance providing for the abatement of $289,000 for the 2009 refunding bonds and the abatement of $80,163 for the 2007 bonds.
Second. Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Chairman Daeney.
That concludes our report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Daeney. Next item we have this evening under Daeney Committee reports is License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Aaronz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our committee is lucky enough not to have any Board agenda items, although I can personally vouch for the fact that License and Ordinance is always busy, just not tonight. And that's it for our committee.
Thank you, Chairman Aaronz. Next item we have, Understanding Committee report this evening is understanding help committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening, however, I can also testify that the Police Department is very busy. Thank you.
Next to Understanding Committee report this evening under Public Works Committee is Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We initially had six items under the Public Works Committee, three of which have been taken care of under the consent agenda, and so we start with 12F, number four, the long-term water decision, and with that, I would defer and pass this on to staff and let them give us a little more information.
Thank you, trustee Cammerer. This is a subject of which we've had a lot of discussions and many presentations and several bidders at late for our business. You have an updated chart from Chris Burke that shows you the latest numbers. There were some changes in Elgin's numbers, and then the last two numbers from Jawa and from DuPage. So I think what the Board had discussed was being able to give the staff direction at this meeting so we can move ahead with the long-term water supply. And I talked to Chris Burke before the meeting and said, "If the Board decides to get Chicago water tomorrow morning, we're going to be putting our application for a Lake Michigan allocation together." So whatever you select, we're ready to make it happen.
Very good. I think after so much discussion on this, that we could confidently direct the Board or the staff to pursue DuPage Water Commission. Does anybody have any other thoughts?
I just have a statement of summary.
Sure.
We've been discussing this for approximately two to three years now. If we are to go with the DuPage Water Commission, with what we have in the works right now, we have the current connection to Elgin Water Supply as an emergency backup. We also have something in the works with a northwest Lake Michigan connection on the north side of Lake Street, so that would be our second emergency connection. So we do have other options, once we do go in this direction, that everybody in town will have the same quality of water.
At the same time.
At the same time.
That's correct.
And then we would be able to be in a position to, once we are connected, to shut down some of our wells and not have to pay the maintenance fees to keep them open, so we would be saving money.
That's correct.
Okay, so in summarization, I'm good with that.
Did well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Carbonaro.
With regards to the wells, though, we're not going to shut down all the wells, correct?
No, we're going to keep one for emergency purposes.
All right, okay.
Very good.
One of the things that I saw is the major difference between the Jawa and DuPage is with DuPage, we have to pay, you know, we're going to be a member, and I think it's important that we commit to be an active member.
Yes.
Which sounds an awful lot like a threat to Commissioner Zay, but it's not. You know, we should be, if we're going to pay the entrance fee, we're going to have some control over our destiny. For Pete's sakes, let's really be involved. I think it's a good opportunity.
We will have a regular member who attends all the meetings, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, and be able to bring back that information to us and see what's going on with the...
I totally agree.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, if that's...
Direct staff to go ahead and pursue and get us the DuPage Water Commission connection. Everybody good with that? Do we want to stop all that, or...
I don't think there's any objections.
No objections at all?
Objections.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to vote.
Don't need a motion?
It would be, I mean, you're not having the agreement in front of you.
Yeah, we're going to have an opportunity to vote on the agreement once it's...
Absolutely.
Right. Vote on the agreement. This direction would be good. It would be good, you're saying?
Yeah. Just to be clear, I think it would make sense to say that we are collectively unanimously... Just to be clear, I think it would make sense to say that we are collectively unanimously directing staff to pursue the DuPage Water Commission. So with that in mind, will the clerk please call the roll and confirmation of that?
Okay. Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
So, I think that's clear?
I think it is. Thank you very much.
There should be balloons and confetti.
Yeah. I forgot that.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is the Metropolitan Water Reclamation Service Agreement Amendment, and with that, I think I'm going to let our head of public works answer a few questions if explained a little bit more in detail.
Thank you, Trustee Cammerer. This agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District is in regards to our Devon excess flow facility, which we've had the EPA violation of trying to meet that limit when it goes online. What this agreement does is give us the restrictor in the manhole that restricts how much flow MWRD will take will be removed for a period of three years to allow us to work out the concepts that would be involved to resolve our issue at Devon, get it designed and built. We still are waiting for the IEPAs approval of our three-year request, but they asked for extension for the review, which is good news, I think, because that means they're really thinking about giving us that extension. So this gives us what we were looking for, remove the restrictor, basically put all the, what ends up being all the Cook County flow to MWRD's plant, and hopefully we will not have to run Devon for the next three years.
Or ever.
Or ever.
Or ever, right. We will continue to work on that as well.
When was the last time our excess flow facility went online?
Right now, it was in June, which I think has something to do with all the lining that we've done in the Cook County area. It's actually, we've seen an improvement, and we haven't had to put it online, which is really good because we know what happens if we put it online.
Yeah.
To most communities that use Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Chicago, are they restricted to only allowing 1.5 times the flow?
What they told us is they don't have a similar, I don't think anyone has a similar situation to what Bartlett has, but for instance, Streamwood and Hanover, what it sounds like they do is when they size a lift station that pumps to their facility, they size a lift station to meet that 1.5. So the pumping capacity only can do so much.
Yeah. So, Streamwood and Hanover Park, they don't have excess flow facilities?
That's my understanding.
So why does Bartlett need an excess flow facility?
Because it was part of our agreement from way back when.
I can tell you that building was probably built in the 20s.
20s.
Yeah, we're an older community than our neighbors, and so we had some facilities that were built in the 20s and are still doing some service for us. Thank you.
Dan, which particular areas of Bartlett benefit the most from this change, this opening this up?
I mean, it's for the Cook County area.
Right. So it's, it would be something that Cook County's benefiting from, however, most of the town is contributing to it by paying their sewer rates and all that kind of stuff in actually accomplishing this, or not?
Right, well, the rates, the sewer rates are different for whether you're in Cook, Kane, or DuPage, so they vary. But, I mean, overall, the village of Bartlett, you know, we pay the bills and get the work done for the entire town.
Just what I was curious about, I mean, whether it was.
The homeowners that live in Cook County, they pay into a separate taxing district to have their sewage treated.
They're correct.
So if you're a business or if you're a resident, you pay into a separate taxing district.
For the treatment portion, right.
On top of your sewage bill that you paid to the village.
Correct.
I was just wondering if it was one of these areas where having a multi-county town, as we do, that the benefits to one area are also contributed to by other counties, other people living in other counties as well, basically. So, I don't know. Okay.
So you were optimistic about them voting on extending this. Is there any possibility that they won't before we start singing that holiday song, "Let It Flow, Let It Flow"?
As far as EPA giving us the three years?
Yes.
So far, what we're being told, if we haven't heard anything, that's good news, because that means they're still looking at it, and if it takes them three years to look at it, then we're still good.
Okay. I think it's something that happens to people that live here for more than 10 or 15 or 20 years. They always start off with this sentence, "Bartlett's a little unique." I think we have that in every situation. We have, you know, certain things that happen here. The, I just want to clarify something because I think we got off on a tangent here. What Cook County pays to this particular place to treat the sewer and what people who live in DuPage pay on their water bill for the sewer is for the water treatment. What we contribute into the water or the sewer fund is also, there's also that money used to line the new or the older pipes and make reparations as well. So it's not just for the water treatment, it's for the entire village reparations and...
Collection system, the lift stations, all that, all those things need to be maintained, correct?
Okay, so in the worst-case scenario, if they do not extend this, we will be having to look at, which we discussed earlier, we'll be having to look at digging a trench going down to Bittersweet.
That's one of the options we will be looking at, yes.
Okay, so is there a sign-up sheet for helping dig?
Yeah.
It's a lot of digging.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions by the board?
There'll be discussion after you move.
Okay, then I would move that the village board approve Resolution 2016-93, Resolution approving the amendment to the sewer service agreement between the village of Bartlett and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammerer, seconded by Trustee Daney. Is there any additional discussion? The only thing I would mention is just I commend Director Dingus and his team for the expediting this agreement because they were, EPA got stricter guidelines, Dan and a crew went down and met with them, the MWRD, right away and expedited the agreement, so well done.
Okay, the next thing.
That's it. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
You got one more?
All right, the last thing on.
That motion carries, sorry.
The last thing on the agenda is the Engineering Services Agreement for Devon Access Flow Facility Improvements. Once again, I'll turn this over to Director Dingus.
Thank you. This, with the last item on the agenda being approved, this basically puts the engineering together to look at all those options of what to do with Devon. Do we make improvements at Devon? Do we run a line, as Trustee Carbonaro suggested, down to Bittersweet? All those things will be looked at. Can we work with MWRD to keep that restrictor out and keep it directed to the MWRD facility? They're going to look at all those options, look at the costs, and then from there, we'll be able to determine what is the most feasible and cost-effective.
Any questions by the board?
How did you guys pick the engineering service agreement?
We always go through and do an evaluation. We have been working with Engineering Enterprises from day one with, once we got the violation notice from the EPA, we went out and kind of did our internal review of our consultants and selected Engineering Enterprises, and they've done a good job to date, and we'd like to keep moving forward with them, so.
Have they done any other projects with MWRD?
Yes.
You know, which ones?
I don't have that with me, but I can get that.
Do you think that if the ultimate objection is to have MWRD take all the flow, do you think all this stuff that's listed is, you know, kind of pointless to go through? If that's our ultimate goal, should we just be focused on that first?
We would like to, but they've already told.
Instead of spending $150,000?
They've already told us no, they won't take it, so it's going to be uphill battle. And with the time clock ticking with the EPA permit violation, we need to be pursuing everything at the same time, because we have to get done with this within a year so we can get whatever the next option is designed, and then the construction built all in three years, which is a tight timeframe. And then if the EPA decides we only get two years, it makes it that much tighter. So it's, we don't have a lot of time, so we need to be pursuing all these different options.
How many gallons over the last 10 years or so, how much excess flow has been created at one time?
We have seen. About 2.5 million is what we've seen, a peak at the Devon facility.
What's the peak at the Bittersweet plant?
The peak? 5.1.
What can it handle?
It can handle up to 10. So we've seen 10 when it goes in excess flow at Bittersweet.
So you don't think it's a good idea to kind of just focus on a couple of these items to try to scale back the costs a little bit?
We will, as much as we can, but like I said, MWRD, 100% their option. They've already told us no and gave us all the reasons why they can't do it. We're still going to pursue it, but unfortunately, we're going to take that restrictor out probably in March, and in order to convince them that it's not an issue, we're going to have to give it time, which could be a year before they get comfortable that, hey, maybe this isn't a problem. So that, and we can't wait and do nothing and not pursue all these other options while we're waiting to see if we can convince MWRD to take our flow. So we kind of have to have all these balls juggling at the same time, unfortunately. But we will, if we go down one line and we see one of the routes to Bittersweet, for instance, and we find that's never going to happen, the costs are just crazy, we're going to, we'll cut that option off and focus somewhere else. So we will, we're always looking at those different things.
Have you guys looked at, like, what other communities do to handle their excess flow?
A lot of them will build storage, which is an option.
Not a good one.
It's not a good one. You would be building a big storage tank down at the Devon, which is surrounded by houses, and then you're holding basically sewage until you can bring it back into the system. It's probably, it may end up being the cheapest option, but is it the preferred? And those are the things that we need to look at.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, then I would move the village board approve Resolution 2016-94, Resolution approving the Engineering Services Agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cammerer, seconded by Trustee Daney. Is there any additional discussion?
I have one quick question. It's just my accounting background, I'm sorry. It says budgeted, N.A. Is that no answer, not applicable? We didn't have this budgeted, so where are the funds going to be coming from for this?
It wasn't, I mean, we didn't have this planned in our schedule this year. It'll come out of sewer reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
And primarily, it's because of the changes that Illinois EPA put together, so it wasn't predictable.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that's all.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have under public works this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammerer. I would just add, I think, Dan, just to clarify on that last little piece, you put 150 out there as an estimate. It doesn't mean all those funds are going to be used, it's just going to, it just keeps you from coming back to us for every little thing that's going to be tested. Yep, okay.
Thank you.
New business? Any new business that you would like to discuss, other than the fact that we need some cold medication up here, or?
Just on that side.
Yeah, keep it over there.
Stay over there.
Just contained over here.
Anything? Hearing none, any questions? Anybody have for staff?
I wanted to say how wonderful the Christmas light look in the downtown area. Good job.
I've gotten a couple of really good comments from people saying, "Oh, my, we have lights downtown." So that's good. Is it possible to shut the light hole off on the ones that have the lights on them? That might be interesting to see how that would look.
Do what?
So they have the light hanging on it, and then the lights above it, so shut the light off. I don't know. Just a suggestion.
Maybe we could put, you know, some kind of tinsel lava off.
Yeah, and I think the, just another comment, I think that mystery lighting is more people every year, it seems like. A lot of people out there.
Just terrific, and a great choir.
Yeah.
Great choir.
Great job by South Elgin Choir. Any other new business or questions, I mean? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting prior, our vote, Village of Bartlett. Moved by Trustee Aaronz, seconded by Trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.[1545.63]